So it is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to Water on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth. Clerk Hootson, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner La.
Here.
Commissioner Penoyer. President, Public Works Director Darnold Bond.
Here.
Public, uh, Police Chief David Burst.
The Town Park here.
Um, we'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will move on to review of the agenda. I'm just talking about the business portion. I do have an addition, but do you want to go through it first?
Business. A, shared parking agreements Trinity Church for discussion. B, Marlboro Town Road for discussion. C, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten property standards for discussion. D, annexation for discussion.
Um, and so there's been some discussion and some concern with the town administrator hiring process that we agreed and voted on, so I want to put that on the agenda. Are there any objections to that? So we'll add that as item B.
B.
Okay.
That was first.
Anything else with the agenda? Then we will move on to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner La.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we'll move into reports then. I do not believe the Arts Council has met. Yeah, so I don't think Arts Council has anything to report. If you're interested in joining the Arts Council, please go to town's website and there's like a volunteer link, not like a volunteer link, actually a volunteer link. Uh, and you can sign up for joining that committee. Um, we have a cert committee report. Has Chief joined us? No. Um, I don't know how many hours they did, but I know that they helped us out with trunk or treat. And were they there for the farmer's market as well?
Uh, later in the farmer's market.
Do you remember that? I don't think there was anything else they did this month. Oh.
I'm not sure if they went to the shred.
They were at the shred event.
Yes, and went to the couple of times.
Yeah, so they helped with our event throughout the month. Then we will move on to Economic Development Work Group. Commissioner Colbert?
Sure. Had the second meeting at the beginning of this month on October sixth, where we were able to be joined by MNCPC representative. We talked through the application for re-designating the town as a sustainable community, so the committee is all looking at that now. We have another meeting scheduled for next Thursday, the second? Not next, November second, um, to work again with MNCPC. Also have, still working through the reimbursement process for the outstanding IP VIP funding. I've had a conversation with one of the business owners. I'll make sure to reach out to the other ones, who are still waiting to get them added. Still waiting to be able to submit the full reimbursement package to DHCD, that they can then process the reimbursement. Their portal is still down. It is right now.
Can you send Clerk Hootson the date and time of the meeting?
Sure.
Um, because over the, at the farmer's market and, and at trunk or treat, people said that they wanted to join the group, so maybe that's true.
Could I just forward you the invite?
Yeah, sure. That'd be great.
Then you can, we can stick it on the comment box.
Thanks.
Thank you. Events Committee.
Okay. This weekend, we had the farmer's market, a combination of the farmer's market with the Events Committee and the Green Team Committee. We came together as a team. Um, we had a pretty successful event. We also had trunk or treat later on in the evening that was very successful. We just want to thank everyone who participated, who donated candy and who, um, donated their time. Thank you very much. Oh, and we are working on the Christmas, I'm sorry, we are moving forward if you would like to volunteer. We are definitely in need of volunteers for the Christmas celebrations we are working on currently. Thank you.
That should send her.
I have a list that Kyle and I put together, so that'd be great.
Green Team.
So I just want to thank all the residents and fellow commissioners and town staff that came out. Uh, it was a successful event. Maybe not as big as we would have liked, but, uh, we will work on that for the next event. Hopefully, um, reach out to some more farmers and maybe a better date. Hopefully, in the spring, it'll be a bigger event. Other than that, uh, the Green Team is working to schedule a meeting with the church, uh, myself and the mayor, uh, to work on garden cleanup and, um, moving forward for the next season. Thank you.
Greenwell Consulting, I don't think they're here. Um, I've been working with them on our app, which we, you know, the roads are so expensive and the money is so tight, that's really, like, you can only ask for one thing. So, um, we've been working with them on getting some funding for the school lane, Wilson Um, Historical Committee, they met this past Saturday. They did not have a forum, uh, so we are, you know, looking for people to join that. They are really interested in engaging youth in history, um, and they would really like to do a newsletter, uh, that they would like to have a variety of perspectives on both the history we're making now and history, um, going back. And so I think they'd like to have kind of contributors to, to that newsletter. And we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. So I will start off. I attended a bunch of meetings. I went to the Economic Development Work Group meeting, Store Committee meeting. Atha Maryland Milestones is an amazing partner to us, so they asked for some help with their rebranding, so give and take. I attended that. Um, we've been interviewing town administrators to get that process rolling. Um, we are starting the tax differential process, which is, if you hear us talk about that, how if you live in the county and not in the town, you pay a dollar per hundred of assessed value. If you live in the town, it's less. Um, and that rate gets renegotiated every year based on the services we provide. So we will be working with the accountants to get as much as possible, that lowered as much as possible for us. Um, the county has been working to make it harder to lower. We're struggling with that balance. We've been working on the website redesign, which I think will launch in February. Pending some PGCMA Legislative Committee meetings to make sure that our interests are also being requested when the county comes together. We have been working to finalize the annexation agreements. I attended a bunch of kind of partner events. There was a Sankofa Mobile Museum opening, Sheriff's Car at Purple Light Night for domestic violence awareness, Capital Challenge Horse Show, and was able to present Oliver Kennedy with an award because they have been here with us for thirty years. We get excited that we have a new horse show, but we have a horse show that's been here for a long time, and those people who come to that really contribute to economic development of the town. Attended an event at Afrika Fashion House, um, met with Senator Watson to discuss the schooling project. Attended a DCAO meeting, Deputy Chief Administrator Officer meeting for Homeland Security and Police. Attended our National Faith in Blue, met with the economic development leaders in the county and got to see some stuff from Experience Prince George's, how they market the county, and there is a lot of Upper Marlboro in it, which is really very cool. And was able to attend a networking event with Experience Prince George's, the MML Fall Conference, and then lastly, our farmer's market and trunk or treat. We'll hand that over to Colbert.
Um, just a couple of things we made this month. I, uh, made a brief appearance at the end of National Faith in Blue, uh, before moving into TA interview. Did to attend both the farmer's market and trunk or treat this past week. And again, the Economic Development Work Group meeting and having conversations with our contact, Dean Cannon, over in Department of Homeland and Community Development.
Mr. Hanchett. Thank you.
Um, other than the farmer's market this past month, I've participated in the, um, town administrator interviews, and that's basically all I have for the month. Thank you.
Same here. I participated, well, I'm participating in town administrator interviews. I attended trick, um, trunk or treat and the farmer's market this weekend. I also have attended the town administrator interviews, attended farmer's market, and I assisted Landon's Ice Cream with their trunk or treat, or trick or treat, however you want to put it, uh, as they had planned to turn out because they were on part of the, um...
Governor's hunt with all the...
And so assisted the mayor. I also went to MML, uh, for the conference for two days. They did have an interesting conversation about tax differential at the conference.
We have a lot of them. Okay. So we'll move into business. So we were hoping that these shared parking agreements would have comments back from the other parties, but they do not. Um, I left them in here so that we could see the changes we talked about. If anyone had anything else, public could have a comment or a chance to comment, uh, but we don't actually have official comments back from the other party.
Is that the agreement with the church?
There's, we're gonna start with the agreement with the church, shared parking agreements Trinity Church. We did get an email from Evan. Were you on that email? It, I think Judge's Drive has, he said it has to stay in.
Yeah, I was on that.
In this draft, so we're gonna have to change that back. Yeah. Does anyone have any additional comments?
I do have a question. I was asked by Reverend Peter to verify, uh, where we had stricken, there was, the property owner shall dictate how many and which spaces are to be allocated for public use and how many spaces the owner needs to retain for its operation. That was stricken, and he just wanted to verify that there will be parking passes or permits allowed.
Yes, we have to work out the parking permit piece with them, um, and so didn't necessarily put anything back in there because no one's ever...
He asked you to second that. Uh, it, this agreement has gone to our attorney through the DA.
Subjected back in November. I think actually, I'm not sure if he can make it on the work session, based on the date he gave, but... Any other comments? If the public have any comments? If you are online, just raise your hand, but I think it's just us online still. Oh, Chief. Chief is...
Chief is with us, and we have...
If you have a, a comment, go ahead.
Oh, I'm ready.
Okay, I'm gonna let Commissioner Colbert go, and then we're gonna get to that first.
No, I was gonna make a point to Commissioner Penoyer, but it looks like in section seven here, outline or... Just like scheduled.
Oh, yeah, you're right. They put in the fifteen percent of available parking space, because the green is, is Reverend Peter, so you're right. But that says shall not be, so we'll have a little more language to... So if you can... The residents, please, go.
Uh, just, just a quick question. Um, who, who's going to enforce the parking for Trinity Church?
The town would take over enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Director Vaughn has a comment.
Just had a quick question. Is there a way for Park Mobile to not direct patrons to the lot when it's being misused by the church? I saw that, you know, Google searches and all that, couldn't direct there, but I didn't know if we had that.
Hmm, probably not, but we can check.
And, um, under eleven amendments, it says, with the exception of permitted scheduling, should the Episcopal, Episcopal, uh, church events, should the Episcopal church shall be exonerated, should that be town events?
Sorry, I'm not sure where you're at.
Eleven amendments.
Oh, here we go. I think it means that, we might have to talk about that, but I'm thinking if they, someone schedules an event with them.
Okay.
Like, say I rent the hall, then it's my responsibility to clean up my trash.
Gotcha.
Um, but, I mean, when we borrow parking lots from people, we clean up after ourselves, so that could go in here. That's good. We'll move on to Marlboro Town Road. Commissioner Colbert, I believe you're going to their meeting, so you can kind of discuss this tomorrow, and see where they're at. Does anyone have any comment on the comments or the changes that we've made? Uh, is there any resident comment?
Um, these are, this is not the main drag in Marlboro Town, but this is the side street, which seem a lot like driveways to me. So I don't know if like, you know, normally I'm expected to maintain my own driveway and everyone else maintains their own, so it seems like we're taking their parking spaces and driveway at Town Road, unless I'm misunderstanding what's going on.
We're not taking their parking space, only the, the lanes, the driving.
So they're still responsible for maintaining parking?
Anyone else? Let's see, those are the... Right, then I think we'll probably move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-three ten property standards. I'm actu, I'm sorry about this, it's very long, but I'm gonna ask our questions to read it into the record for us because it's changed, yes?
Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten, question regular town meeting, introduced ninth, October the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and ordinance of the town of Upper Marlboro to be entitled, the property standards ordinance, thereby replacing and repealing ordinance twenty-sixteen dash zero three residential property standard and ordinance twenty-seventeen dash zero three commercial property standard, providing new or revised sections regarding ordinances for purpose and authority, flexibility and scope, authorizing the office and duties of code enforcement officer, providing for certain definitions establishing and describing certain property conditions or circumstances to be violations of the ordinance, providing for a system of notices of violation of standard and penalties for such violations and repeat violations, providing a penalty for failure to register with the state's certain foreclosed properties, providing for the abatement of certain violations relating to real property by the town, establishing a timeframe for notices of standard penalties for the violations thereof, describing the treatment of rental property, authorizing the town to enforce certain standards pertaining to the upkeep and maintenance of commercial property, describing the powers and duties and functions of certain town officials, adopting certain code by reference, defining certain terms, providing for the, for promote location of rules and regulations, and establishing certain fines, fees, and qualifications of fines and fees schedules to be modified by resolution and other related provisions, and generally relating to residential and commercial property needs.
Very illiterate.
Very much.
Thank you. Do you want to give up, and do you want to kind of do the overview of what he did, or do you want me to do that?
You can, you can, we can do it together.
Yes. Um, so this went to the town attorney, and what he did was he took the building standards, the property standards, and the commercial property standards, and he pushed them together into one. All of it refers back to the county's code and sets up our own, um, pre-process before we would get the county involved. Uh, and that way, you don't have to go over each little item that's already set by the county. Do you want to add anything?
And then this will be, the reason why we're on hold with our codification is because this will make up the bulk of the codification, so that when we get our code put together, the property standards will be in there, and then residents that go to the code will see exactly what their health is, the standards of their health for the property.
So you can see, strike through is that was removed, all caps, is that it was added. So if anyone has any specific comments or questions? Well, yeah, we'll do resident comments. Don't worry about, sorry. The, I will say that on page thirty of forty or forty-nine of the packet, all of that text in all caps, uh, is a little, needs some grammatical and consistency work. So I've marked that up a little bit, and we're gonna have to work with the county on it, or, sorry, the town attorney on it. There's like fifteen and seven and seven and fifteen, and it doesn't actually make sense, and I understand what he's trying to say, but it's neat.
So we're, we're updating the, um, the fines also.
He just kind of changed it from being a table to being a statement.
Okay.
So it was first offense was fifty, second offense a hundred. So he made the fine stay the same, but he just made a sentence instead of a...
No, he changed it from fifty to seventy-five.
Fifty for the first, seventy-five instead of a hundred. So I don't know, he communicate with you at all about why he made the changes to me? So, um, obviously...
Yeah, why did he lower it? It's a...
Because of the sentence. We just, we just brought it into a sentence.
Oh, gotcha.
Instead of a...
So all the violations are gonna be the same?
Be the same.
If the first offense, and then the multiple offenses will be seventy-five for...
So, I mean, partly a question for us, of do, do we want to propose different, different fines to the attorney for him to look at and advise us on whether it's...
Just not sure why he changed it from a hundred to seventy-five, but, you know, what was wrong with the price?
Don't know. I'm wondering if it was because there was this one situation that was twenty-five, and he was trying to strike a middle balance? I don't... On page thirty-seven.
Thirty-eight.
It's used too, you have to kind of like flip to the same page. Um, so are we asking, can it go back to a hundred, or are we just asking why seventy-five?
Yeah, just why? And why would we have something for twenty-five dollars when it's a parking surface? What does that mean?
Parking surface.
I think that's why it just got changed. So it's no, it was struck out. I don't know what it meant.
Parking surface.
Maybe Chief, um, the question is, in the fines, in the original code ordinance, there was a fine for parking surfaces. Um, I was gonna guess, I was gonna say, I'm gonna say it's because they were parked not on, on a paved surface, but you know, so you can tell us.
Yes, it's a fine, so you're not supposed to park on your grass or any surfaces or, you know, any property that's not paved, like, and your personal property, so you're not supposed to park on your grass, so that's what that's saying. But I'm not sure why the fines were changed, um, and just, my thought is that we should be consistent, because if we do have to have the county enforce something for us, if our fines are lower than what theirs are, then it's gonna be a conflict, because if they're taking over a particular case or situation, they're gonna issue the fines at what they're doing and not what we're doing. So that's gonna cause a problem, so I think it should be consistent.
Well, I agree with that. That's why I was asking about, um, the change also. The price, the original price was fifty for the single incident, and then multiple incidents, a hundred dollars each. Now it's changed to seventy-five for multiple offenses. So I don't know why he changed the price, but, um, mayor says that it may have been to...
I'm just speculating.
...to balance out the twenty-five bucks that they charge for parking surfaces. So, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, since we're waiting for that, there's also a second fine table in here.
Oh, you're right.
Fifty-two or fifty-three. Um, without, it looked like it may be related to different parts of the code, or different fines are being assessed, but it can be, consolidate that in one fine action as opposed to having it spread out.
Because it doesn't make sense.
Right.
So it's actually...
But it doesn't make sense.
I think it's the commercial piece rather than the residential.
Is that where I'm getting?
Oh, okay, okay. So, and kind of to talk about the fines is, so we start the enforcement, right? Um, when you call in the county, the fine can be huge, so this is kind of saying, we're gonna be a little friendlier, like, grass is long, fix it. Don't fix it, here's your fine. Continue not to fix it, here's another fine. Continue not to fix it, now the county's coming with a big fine. Not for grass, probably, but the idea is that it's, we're, we're small town, we're community, we're friendly, we want you to keep your property up, but we're not trying to put you in bankruptcy over it.
Right, but that was on this page. Now this page said maybe commercial.
Commercial probably should be high, because our commercial properties are unhappily downtown.
No, no issues there, but there, they have basically the same pricing. I mean, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred.
So can we go higher on commercial?
We should.
Because they aren't really keeping...
And I think that on the residential side, I think it should depend on what it is, as far as what the dollar amount should be.
So we would have to pull in the county's... So we would have to pull in the county, all the county's violations and determine an amount for each violation if we did that, which is gonna make this a lot and then also as the county changes their violations, then.
We have to change this as well.
We have to change this.
But either way, we still have to change it, right?
No, because it, uh, it's like the current, let me see where he has that language.
And once it goes to the, okay, so my understanding is we have this here and what has, which has the, you know, the fines and stuff in it, right? But once it gets to the point where it has to go to the county, it's a whole nother level, a whole nother board game of fines that we don't have anything to do.
Right. Once we call in the county, we're out of it.
Okay, so then we don't really need to.
Right, so then he put, so the building code of the town shall be the current building code of the county. It's like the county's gonna amend its building code and this automatically is gonna stop.
We.
So that's why if we pull in the stuff.
So you're saying that these numbers would eventually match the county? That's not my understanding.
No, so the county has a whole list of violations.
Right, right.
And each one has to comply. If we decided we were going to issue different fines for different violations, we would need to pull that list from the county, put it into our ordinance.
Right.
Then if the county changed that list.
Then we have to update.
We would have to update this ordinance.
Right.
Rather than what this is doing is automatically updating.
Okay.
Our ordinance, so we don't have to look at it anytime that the county.
Okay, I got it.
So that.
Okay, thank you. Yep, I'm clear.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Kevin if we can bring up the commercial and then we're gonna ask him why on the residential.
Mm-hmm. Why did he lower it?
All right. Um, public comment. So I see we have someone online and we have some in the room. Okay, he's, he's deferring.
Okay.
He's deferring to online.
Okay. Patty?
Um, just a question. Uh, this is Patty Calacott from Church Street. Um, where do we find or will the, uh, will the town be posting the county property standards? And, um, will they also be posting the town fines versus the county fines? And also how are they reported? What is the, what is the means for reporting if you, if your neighbors growing grass, you know, a foot and a half, how do you report that to the town? Obviously, since you're taking the first step in this, how is that gonna be reported?
You'll just, you'll continue to just report it to the town as you always have.
Well, either code enforcement will see it.
Right, yeah, code enforcement's gonna do their drive-throughs, it's gonna solve some of the precedent problems that we can't enforce right now. Um, and they'll be able to do that and then if you see something before code does, you can still call town hall.
Uh, will we be using?
And we can post a link to.
The info? The email info?
Yeah, you can, you can call the town, you can email info, all the same ways to get in touch with the town as normal.
Okay. Um, okay. I'll wait for later. Thank you.
Okay. And I've noted the link to the county. All right. Okay.
Hi, Joe Workplace, welcome over to Fight. Um, first time I've seen this version, other times I've been watching that tonight. Um, there do need some consistency issues, like in the where add some are pursuant effects whenever versus pursuant to, um, there's a lot of like tabbing, some stuff's not lined up. Um, I'm confused by the reference to the town's building permits, but then I found something that says the county's building permits is their town's building permit. Um, because, uh, I'm concerned by something they just mentioned that the code enforcement officer was going to be driving around and then looking at stuff and my understanding with the town's policy was that they waited until someone complained before citing people. So I don't know if that is a new policy change or not. Um, uh, also the, the requirement for, um, uh, snow removal. Um, I know that there are some town residents such as myself whose agreement to get a sidewalk, um, was that the town maintained it because we traveled a lot in the winter, so we may not be here when there are snows. Um, I don't know, Leach Tracy Stone may be the only one who still here, I think, property has changed hands since then, so I don't know if, if the agreement was regarding the property itself, you know, the sidewalk or with that individual person. Um, uh, facilities, the, the requirements to get certain things fixed within seven days. Um, I had a part of his house that I owned in town. There is no way I could have had that fixed within seven days because it took me years to find folks to deal with insurance and find people who agreed to willingly do the work because it required, it involved damage assessment, assesses, and some folks said they wouldn't even work in P C County. Um, what else? Uh, there were some other cases where like fifteen seemed to not be removed. Um, you know, it's like they changed fifteen to seven, but they hadn't actually stretched out the fifteen. Um, for age thirty-nine, for D is like garbage one, I guess that was intended to be assumed definition. Um.
Well, this is definitely still a work in progress.
Yeah. Um, also we mentioned on page forty-six was section one sixty-two A, which I do think is a town structure, which is a public match of formatting of this ordinance. Um, that's, that's amazing. There, um, in the vacant, uh, ordinance, so the vacant property stuff, um, they referenced this ordinance twenty twenty-two oh five, which is not one of the ones that's to be replaced or appealed, so I don't know if it's intended to or not. I don't have that ordinance in front of me, so I don't know what this like new that's happened doesn't. Um, on page fifty-four, you have your list of missing owner is a corporation or a really liability and such, uh, financial effects or assistance of government from the county. Um, maybe it's false under one of those and that's all I had of it.
Okay.
I know they can't.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted to say, I don't think it makes sense for us to have a town enforcement person and can't go around and see things and cite people. I think it makes no sense at all for anybody to have to fall on their neighbor when we have someone that pays to drop around to make sure that, um, they're citing people.
So, so, hold, we, we can't engage in discussion with the public, um, but we can say our opinion, which, um, and I think we've talked about this before, maybe during the work session. Okay.
Hi, Jennifer Law. Um, just wanna give you the hierarchy because we have an HOA, like am I gonna be getting notices from the county and the town or have to go to the HOA first and then it goes to the town and it goes to the county?
Keith, can you explain that in less than sixty seconds?
Yes, so basically because they're in, because they're in an HOA, any violations for property standards should be taken care of first by the HOA. That's what you're paying the HOA dues for. They're supposed to maintain the property, just like the lawns and things of that nature. So we come in after an extended period of time or if the HOA has not moved in a timely fashion, that will probably be the best answer. Um, cause we, we can't come in and just take over because then you all are paying for those services and it wouldn't be appropriate for us to do it first. Your HOA has to try to get it squared away and then we'll come in after.
Can I ask a question to that, chief?
So hold on, because we wanna give the residents her time, we can discuss more. Sorry.
And what is a sidewalk?
What is a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Oh, you want a definition in the official.
Well, I'm just wondering because we have sidewalks and then I have.
Yes, I think those sidewalks are different because they're H, do you know the ones like right in front of the townhomes? Those are not, not, we don't maintain those, the HOA maintains them. So the rules for those sidewalks would be HOA rules. We should probably spell that out in here.
And they're definitely not.
And one part is that no one I shall be removed for thirty-six hours, another part is that one I shall be removed in twenty-four hours.
Which consistency.
Eight thirty-six then fifty-one.
Detective wanted to see.
Separated.
If they're terrible.
It says the commercial has twenty-four hours, the resident has thirty-six.
We will, we will, yeah, so we just wanna give all the residents a chance. Sorry, thank you, okay. Um, are there any residents online? Okay, so commission has further comment. I do just wanna say one thing real quick about that, seven days, seven days is not meant to be punitive, it's meant to say, hey, before we issue you any fine for giving you a chance to fix this. So if it's a big massive situation where your house got hit by a car, then that's a, that's space for a conversation to happen. So, okay.
But to that.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. My, this is.
Yeah, my comment was on that, I was thinking about the seven day thing one. So on page fifty, and if I'm looking at commercial versus residential again, I feel correct in what it says, our current fine and notice to correct shall be issued in seven day intervals thereafter until the. That's correct. Four fines.
Two days.
Corrected, I think, at seven days when the property needs to be expanded, I'm just thinking about people that I've had to call to come up to fix things.
Sometimes they can get out, by the way.
This whole section is the one I was talking about that needs to be fixed and I think Mr. Herple was also talking about how it needs to be fixed, so we need to just, Kevin and I just need to go through this section.
So what I wanted to say, I wanted to piggyback off of what chief was saying, um, it goes through the HOA first, but because, okay, so what if they don't act fast enough or they don't, does the fine go to the, didn't, does the fine go to the resident or does it go to the HOA for not, um, cleaning up or whatever? Cause they refer to the HOA to get certain services. So then, does the HOA get fined or the resident?
I think it depends on if it's a common area or a resident's property, but chief, is that correct or?
Yeah, so if it's an individual property, the property owner would get fined. If it's the common area, we would try to work with the HOA to make sure they got cleaned up and we could find the HOA, uh, management company if they're not doing stuff in a timely fashion. But yes, um, we would actually give them sort of the same amount of grace time, cause once we know about it, so if we knew about it today and then we notified them, you know, hey, you all know about this situation? They say yes, okay? If they don't fix it in two weeks, then we're gonna then say, okay, you have two weeks to fix it, now it's gonna be time for us to step in and get it resolved one way or the other, either through the homeowner paying and being fined or the HOA.
So if it's a common area, then it's the HOA and if it's a person's personal property, it's the individual resident.
Yes.
Cause I know they have a lot of renters over there too, so that's my concern with the renters, um, is it actually the homeowner who's gonna get fined or the renter?
It's the home.
So it's more.
It's the actual homeowner, whoever owns the home is the one who gets the violation and then they're to turn it over, I guess, to the, to the tenant. But it's the actual homeowner who gets fined, just like when you put a lien on a property for something that the tenant hasn't done, it goes to the owner and not the tenant.
Right, okay, thank you, chief. Anything else? Okay, that gives us stuff to work with for the work session. And I'll work with the town attorney. So we will, um, move on to annexation. Um, this was put in at the board discussion because I'm hoping to have an agreement, but I do not have an agreement. Um, we are working through some things with these last three agreements, hopefully next Then the next thing is the town administrator hiring process. So we all, we all, oh, sorry, we need to give, as we talked about annexations, the residents need to have a chance to comment on recent annexations. Okay. So our comments, so we'll, we'll move on to the town administrator hiring process. Um, so in August and September, we all agreed on a town administrator hiring process. We have been working through that process. Um, we have just completed interviews and we are trying to move on to the next phase, which will be, um, staff panel interview. They are, we did have a form when we were doing the interviews that was supposed to help HR rank, but everybody just didn't fill it out the same, so they sent out a survey. Um, and only three of us filled out the survey, so I know I filled it out, I don't know who did and who didn't, um, but there's also been, um, emails kind of saying, let's just get the next steps and move forward. Um, Commissioner Pinoir emailed me, uh, she was trying to talk directly to, um, the HR firm and they were uncomfortable with it not being all of us talking about how we want the process to be, um, so they asked for us to have that discussion. So I guess there's some desire to change the process, there's a concern that everybody's not participating in the process and we all voted on hiring process, so I don't want to make changes without everybody.
Okay, so I, I took the email initially because I was just like, I didn't remember every, everybody, cause I wasn't here for all of them, but I did, you know, watch the video and I did rate them, but I was just, I felt like, why can't we just have a closed session? And that's what I said in my email and that's just talking through really quickly. Um, for me, that works better for me. Um, so I can't speak for anybody else, but that's the reason why I raised the question. Um, I think initially when you mentioned the process, I don't think that I understood what was really gonna happen, to be honest. So for me, I just felt like, and then because I, like I said, I, I didn't, I wasn't there to kind of feel the person out. On the video, you're watching it and you're, it's like watching a documentary almost. It's not like you're actually there presently and you can kind of feel, you know, get some kind of vibe from the person. So it was a little different for me, so that's the reason why I asked.
But we agreed in September, after we interviewed, there was no further input from HR that I could see. Uh, HR was to give us the initial six or ultimately eight, uh, applicants and we were to interview. Uh, that is where their input was ended as far as I could tell from what I went back and listened to the, uh, when we voted on it. So I agree in the fact that we should be able to, uh, have a closed session and I think we all know who our top three candidates are. Uh, and if we were to put them all together, we could note which ones floated to the top rather quickly and if we could expedite this matter.
My understanding was that once we got through the, the, the round of interviews that HR had sent us, that whatever, whoever floated to the top based on the comment that we put on the form, they would, you know, give us whatever would be top three for whatever and then we would have the closed session.
Five, but no, everybody didn't do it.
Right, the, what, we all didn't do the, the number ranking and I was one of the ones who didn't do it, but my understanding that they were consolidating the notes, whatever pieces of information that we.
I thought that was the reason why they had the ranking numbers.
Right.
That's gonna make a big difference, cause if you put a five and you put a one or vice versa, then that kind of helps them, they don't really have to read the notes.
We just.
So that with the, the.
I did, I did shoot the, the rating.
Right, so the survey ranking is getting, solving the problem of our, right, so the third, but the problem is that the survey ranking opened last Tuesday, it closed today, but only. today, but only three commissioners did the ranking. So it becau, when we initially came up with this process, there, there is a step that has not happened yet, which is the, the staff panel discussion. Um, and that has to happen. Nine candidates, even if staff spends only a half an hour with each candidate, we're talking about a half a day of staff time on this. So I do not want to do that, given that we're down a town administrator. So that is why, you know, yes, there are details involved. And it's HR's job to make sure that our hiring process is fair and equitable and doesn't have any possibility to challenge it. And so that, that's what they're trying to do here. They're trying to set us up for success. If everyone would take, once everyone had taken that survey, they could have started calling and setting up those staff interviews, get us the feedback so we could have the closed session and hash it out. But the survey hasn't been taken. So I feel like we all want to get to the closed session so we can hash it out, so we can do our hiring and make our offer, right? And do the hiring, but we have to follow this process so that we're being.
You can't change it in the middle of, to be doing it.
What do we?
We might be changing. We have to wait till we're done.
But what are we changing? We ain't changing nothing.
We, the staff needs to interview everyone.
No one said the staff couldn't do.
Nine candidates? That's what I'm concerned about.
That's a lot for them to have to do.
That's why we're ranking.
That shouldn't even be an issue. They shouldn't be interviewing nine people. They should be interviewing our last, not, not nine people.
So how, how many people are we, what's the magic number we're looking to get? Like three candidates?
Well, yeah. So HR sent out this survey and everyone was supposed to fill out the survey.
I didn't see it until the day I sent the email. So whatever day I sent you the email, that's the day I saw it.
But it still, did you know that after that?
Suggestion. Cause I wanted, I wanted to find out one of my question answers. So I didn't, when I saw it, I was like, wow. I don't even remember everybody's name. I didn't remember everybody's name. You know, like to say, oh, I want to rank this person. I didn't even remember.
She gave all our papers back. So we had our notes and the number.
I get that, but that doesn't mean I remember who it was. That for me doesn't.
It took me a little while, but yeah, I understand your frustration.
I didn't even remember. And I was just like, well, why are we doing this? Why? We just can't talk about them real quick? And then, I mean, cause then we talk about them and I don't know who, who we talking about.
Email from HR said that she suggested that we go in this direction. There was nothing that said this is what we will do. She, this is their suggestion on how we were to proceed.
Think we hire professional services to give us their professional advice and we should take it. Um, so it, it should have taken five to 10 minutes to fill out the survey and we could have a top, top five candidates to, and have been scheduling these interviews with staff. And, sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
So I think, I, I, she's closed the survey, but I can, we agree, like I can open it back up or if you just want to write it in a list and format and send it to her, send her your top three or whatever it is so she can try. Because I think us sitting down and talking about nine people could become a long and complicated meeting where if we all just stick a number and HR puts it into the spreadsheet, then they can do.
Three people. Uh, ever. I'll just email three people. But like I said, it was like one person that I really liked and I couldn't remember their name. And looking at the papers doesn't help. Sorry. But I did, that's for me. But I am willing to move us forward and not hold up the process. And I can email HR three names tomorrow. Um, not going to be a big issue because we need to get, um, we need to move forward.
So she'll just give those numbers associated with.
I'll just, one, two, three.
Right. She just gave, she'll give them numbers and the rest of the group, she won't give a number and that will be part of her computation.
And I'll send her an email and say, this is my, you know, in order of, in this order, this is my top persons, you know?
Yeah. So she'll, she can assign the numbers and stick them in the spreadsheet.
That's fine.
So are we ready to keep moving forward with the process?
I don't think we have any choice.
Well, yes, I think we run into legal issues if we don't follow forward with the process. So it, it doesn't seem, once, once we agree on a process that we change it midway, every candidate has the ability to say the process was unfair to them.
If, if this, all the responses are given back to HR by, say, tomorrow, if she's going to be able to make her determination and then we can, they can.
If everyone gives, so I can, it sounds like I don't need to reopen it.
I'll, I'll send them. I'll just send an email tomorrow. Cause I, I.
I'll ask Michelle.
I should rate all those people. I can't. I don't remember.
So she assigned each, your ratings gotta assign a number. She'll assign your top three a number and plug them into the spreadsheet.
That's fine. Cause I can remember my top three, but I can't remember, uh, nine people. I'm sorry.
So she's basically taking, taking our rankings, giving them a number, plugging into a spreadsheet, and then whichever numbers are the highest, she's taking those on to the next step.
But I did, I also did the, the numbers on the side. So I don't think that's relevant at this time.
That's how I figured out mine. So here down, adding all, if I circled the numbers, I added all the.
Oh, I didn't do that. But I did, I did write that. I do know who my top three are for. I can, I just felt like if it's gonna be nine people and it's so, it's so many people, I can't even remember beginning to tell you about.
I mean, it's matter of people given for the.
Unless I know exactly who it is that I want.
Okay.
Sounds like we have to pass forward. It sounds like we have to pass forward.
So by noon tomorrow, everyone who wants to participate in the process the way it's carried on will have given Michelle the data she needs to do.
I'll put it on my calendar. I'll do it in the morning when I get to work.
So that she can start scheduling interviews in the afternoon.
Oh, cool. I know this is important. We don't need to hold this up too much. But I also felt like it would have been, maybe not, maybe.
We would have had to start at the beginning. Any public's comment on? Um, then we'll move on to administrative updates. Have one administrative update, which is that the blood drive for this Friday still has five open slots. So if you want to give blood, um, go to the Red Cross website, stick in our zip code. It is to the blood drive at Soil Conservation District. These are all afternoon slots. Do, do the other staff have administrative updates?
Well, I do have a question. I would ask like this week. When are you going to start spring break and approve?
Oh, we, yeah.
Well, the contractor, um, is pretty much scheduled through November. So if they have an opening before it gets too cold, they squeeze us in this year.
So we're all hoping for warm weather.
Maybe.
All right. So we are on to general public's comment. So if you have any comments on anything, please share.
Sheriff's Labor Department, um, quarter nine people that were doing the four dates again, uh, are November first, which we can next Wednesday. So six to nine, if anyone's like come down and you have things, you can just drop into or drop out as they need.
Is it here?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, for the blood drive, I wonder more if you, you only have two steps up for each one and, um, used to have a third person because Lee likes to set himself up and donate blood and also strictly running for a team. And so he can't actually watch people when he's giving blood. You might, there's somebody passing out or whatever and you're not being there as someone to deal with them.
We have a staff, we have a staff member who communicates back and forth with Soil Conservation and you work with that.
Um, and regarding the parking services, um, I know when I was town commissioner, there was an issue with the county cited a whole bunch of folks are rectory lane for not having valid parking. Um, some of them had a gravel section. Um, you know, they said, look, you're not parked on your driveway. It cited them. And there was something at the time where it's like the, the ordinance didn't actually apply to our town somehow. It was like, it was only for certain types of zoning. Um, and so I don't know if that still applies to us or not. I couldn't find that exception when I went looking for it. But, um, I know rectory lane, I don't know which other one tend to have an issue of someone having a birthday party. If you can't park on the grass, you're blocking the street, fire agents can't get through and it causes all sorts of other problems.
Code's not going through on Saturday, finding people having birthday parties.
But also the, some folks have gravel. Um, I know the folks who lived directly behind me, their whole driveway is gravel. You know, they actually have no park surface.
Gravel is, is considered safe under the definition.
Hi, thank you. Um, Patty Calacott, Church Street. Uh, two things. Can y'all post the extensions when you call the town hall? When you call, they ask for an extension immediately. So if you could post the extensions for the different areas that you wanted, uh, that we want to get to, that would be really helpful. Cause I go to contacts and it just gives me the general number. And then the other one is, can you also, uh, post a link to the county property standards? Um, so that we.
Right. I put that as a note.
I'm sorry?
I added that note.
Okay, great.
I put that as a note.
All right. Great. Thank you. That's all.
And we've been advised by our IT firm and our insurance firm and legal from MML, not post extension.
Okay. But when you call, it says if you know the extensions, that's strange.
So can you request it on, can you request it?
Can I, can I personally get a, a list of the extensions then?
So you can just go, go through to the operator and they'll patch you through to the extension. If you have a person who you're regularly calling and you want their extension, just ask them for their extension.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great. Any one else? Well, I will take a minute to just say welcome to a base that we haven't, I haven't seen in a while. So thank you for joining us. Um, and we'll move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. So there's our work session. Um, we've got parking agreements again. Um, we like to just leave stuff in the work session in case we think of things that come up while we're going through the process. Property standards, um, clerk postman and I will get a new draft for that. Annexation, we will have something there. And then the action plan from the vision plan, uh, as well as the, we should have responses on the legal request or proposals. Is there anything else that anyone wants to add to the work session? And there will be a closed session somewhere announced about the town administrator hiring process, probably in between. Then is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh, hold on. Sorry. Clerk postman has.
Yeah. Just a reminder, the election will take place on Tuesday, November seventh. Full hour to from eight AM until seven PM. Full location is right here at Town Hall, one four two on Leighton School Lane. It's to elect five commissioners to a two-year term. If you'd like to request an absentee ballot, you can request so at the website. You can go to the call at Town Hall or you can scan the QR code that you see on screen. Um, if you have any questions regarding the elections, feel free to get in touch with the board supervisor of the election.
There's a motion to adjourn that started by Commissioner Lot. Is there a second?
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Holbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great.
Wait. Thank you. Good luck, everybody.